Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hartford Common Council. All proper notices were sent. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if you please join me. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Shiana.
The mayor and all alderpersons are present except Alderperson Webb and Alderperson Garza, who are absent and excused.
Thank you. We have before us unanimous consent agenda for approval.
Move to approve.
President Rosniak, second by Alderperson Turchi.
Motion by Alderperson Rosniak, seconded by Alderperson Turchi, approving the Common Council minutes of March 12th, 2024.
Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Thank you. At this time, we've got communications. Hartford Rotary 100th Anniversary. You might want to turn these mics down just a little bit. This one's pretty live. So, okay, go ahead, please.
You all should have received communication regarding celebrating the Hartford Rotary's 100th Anniversary. So if you have not done so already, you can please, if you could please RSVP by April 10th, or as soon as possible.
Did any of you receive a hard invitation from the Rotary?
Mm-hmm.
You did?
Yep.
Joe, ask your wife if she got command.
I'll have to ask.
You did not get one?
She usually puts that in my pile.
Don't recall seeing.
Yeah, I don't either.
But it would have been about two, three weeks ago.
In the mail.
In the ma- in the mail.
Yeah, in the mail. Postmail.
Right.
Then I would say no.
Oh.
Okay. You're invited.
[laughing]
There's your invitation.
Thank, thank you. And-
Or you can have mine.
And when is it then?
I will send you a, uh, an email invitation.
Just take a picture and send it to us.
Yep.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Include me in that one.
Any other volunteers for the email picture? Everybody else got one?
No, I didn't get one.
No?
Nope.
All right.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. Uh, next, we have appearances, citizen comments. Any Hartford citizens wishing to appear? You can come up to the podium. You get three glorious minutes. Anyone? Anyone?
I'm not a Hartford citizen, but I am a citizen of Rubicon, and there is a, agenda item this evening covering Rubicon. May I please speak?
Yes. You've given us a lot of information, so I'll allow a person from Rubicon to speak, please. But you have to go up to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening. Jim Klink, W1494, Pond Road, Rubicon.
Thank you.
I have been a member of the Rubicon Plan Commission for a number of years, and I would like to comment on Agenda Item 11, approving the adjusted urban area boundary, specifically its expansion into the town of Rubicon. You should have received a letter from the town raising some concerns that we had from the Plan Commission, and giving you some maps and some other information. The town learned of this proposal just days before the March 12th Plan Commission meeting, and has been scrambling to get up to speed on its impact on us. I do understand that this deals only with the city of Hartford's ability to apply for highway grant money. The proposed boundary makes small changes along the north and south, but is a very large expansion of the current urban area boundary westward into the town of Rubicon that is not justified by the guidelines in the Wisconsin Department of Transportation Guidance Document included in your agenda for this evening. I will reference specific pages of that agenda. Page 24 is the map. The original agenda had a grayscale map. You now have a color copy that shows the different boundaries much more clearly. By my best estimate from that map, the current urban area boundary is an area of approximately 14 square miles. That is the area within which the city is currently eligible to apply for highway grant money. According to the 2020 census, the city limits encompass 8.42 square miles, so the area outside the city limits, but within the current urban area boundary is approximately five and a half square miles. Focusing in on the area being added to the west, where the majority of the expansion is noted, the adjusted urban area you are being asked to approve tonight adds approximately four and a half square miles from the town of Rubicon, and about one square mile from the town of Hartford, for a total of five and a half. This approximately doubles the area outside the city limits in which the city is eligible to apply for highway grant money. If I were a citizen of Hartford who lives on a street that is in need of repairs, there might be one, right? I would ask why the city is looking to double the area outside the city limits that are eligible for grants to do highway repairs and improvements, when my street inside the city limits is in need of repair. Now, I would like to address why the area included in the adjusted urban area boundary within the town of Rubicon does not meet the guidelines provided by the Wisconsin Department of Transportation in their guidance document. Page 32 of your agenda, technical considerations, Bullet Point 4, this is from the DOT guidelines. Include within the adjusted boundary areas, include within the adjusted boundary areas expected to be developed in the next 10 years. Because the urban boundary adjustment process occurs only once every 10 years, include areas that are likely to experience growth and development during the upcoming 10-year window, areas which might be included in the next census boundary definition, unquote. In addition to just looking at the map and asking why there would be any kind of significant growth in some of the rural areas included in that large adjusted urban area being added, there are boundaries defined in the extraterritorial agreement between Rubicon and Hartford as the city growth area. That's that map with the yellow shading and the blue lines that I gave to you. That area covers just under 800 acres, or 1.25 square miles. Under the definition of the city growth area in the interminable agreement, it states, quote, "This area is deemed sufficient to meet the development and expansion of city limits through the year 2032," unquote. If the 1.25 square mile area defined as the city growth area is sufficient for the next eight years till 2032, why is 4.5 additional square miles being added to the adjusted urban area boundary if it is only supposed to include areas, quote, "expected to be developed in the next 10 years," as specified in Bullet Point 4 of the guidance document? It would make more sense to include in the urban area boundary only the part of Rubicon within the Rubicon sanitary district, as that is where it is most likely any major development would occur in the next 10 years. Adding the large 4.5 square mile area is major overreach, unless Hartford sees itself more than doubling in size in the next 10 years. I urge you to reconsider this proposal, to bring it more closely into alignment with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation guidelines and the terms of the interminable agreement, and I would hope that there would be a little bit better communication with the town when things like this come up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other topic? Any citizen of the City of Hartford wishing to speak? The third call. Hearing none, we go to the, okay, please, go ahead.
I'm not sure I know all the rules.
Okay, well, the rules are you have to be a citizen of the City of Hartford, and you get three glorious minutes.
Okay. I don't know if I am. I am, not. I'm in the town. But it's about a topic where you're annexing property into the city?
Okay, we can only annex property, and then I'll turn this over. If you would please contact the city administrator afterwards. We cannot annex property into the City of Hartford unless we get a petition for annexation, with the exception of if we need it for a water tower. Short of that, we don't. Go ahead, Steve.
That's item number nine on the, you'll have a public hearing for that.
Right. Oh, okay. If this is for the public hearing, you will have a chance to speak, because we do open that up to all the folks, appearances for and appearances against. So if it's, yes, it is. Item number nine.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And seeing this will take a while, I do not have anything specific for the mayor's report. At this time, we'll do aldermanic requests. President Rosniak.
Steve, the barricades are up for Highway 83 South from Monroe South. Have we been notified of that? Have we put out any notices on that? The barricades are up at Monroe and 83. What's the story there?
Uh, so they had sent us something probably about two months ago that we had put out regarding that it was intended to be right around April 1st.
Okay.
And so that was the last thing that they had sent to us.
Okay. Do we need to notify citizens in Hartford at all, and something like that?
We don't, no.
No?
It's not our responsibility to reach out to the citizens regarding it.
Okay.
That's the DOT's responsibility.
When they see the barricade, they'll stop, right?
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Thank you. Alderperson Carroll.
Nothing to nightmare.
Alderperson Regan.
Yes, I'd just like to give an update to everyone on the Mid-Maine Municipal Association Legislative Committee meeting that was held on Wednesday, March 13th, in Jackson. The Urban Towns Bill didn't make it out of committee before the Wisconsin Legislative Session ended, so no action was taken on it. Josh Shoman, Washington County Executive, was the guest speaker. One of the topics he addressed was the county sales tax referendum that passed last spring. Basically, he said since the county wasn't involved in the planning and execution of the initiative, they will not support it or even vote on it. Instead, he just referred to shared services that have been implemented with certain municipalities and others he's working toward implementing. Workforce housing was briefly mentioned. The next-generation development being built in Jackson was touted as a great success.
I'm glad they've gone back to my original title eight-plus years ago with Tom Hosted, workforce housing, which is what we called it when we started that whole thing. Okay. Alderperson Turchi.
Uh, nothing to nightmare.
Alderperson Savage.
Nothing to nightmare.
Alderperson Kohler.
Nothing to nightmare.
Alderperson Fuller.
Nothing to nightmare.
Thank you. With that, we do start a public hearing. This is a petition for direct annexation by unanimous consent, submitted by Home Path Financial for approximately 18.08 acres located north of Autumn Ridge Estates Edition Number 1, and east of County Trunk Highway K in the town of Hartford. The tax key number, for the record, is T6-049100D and T6-16800B. I'd like to open the hearing and ask for the reading of the notice.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held at 7:00 PM or thereafter on March 26th, 2024, in the Common Council chambers at the lower level of City Hall, 109 North Main Street, by the City of Hartford Common Council to consider the following: a petition to annex property to the City of Hartford. The petitioned area consists of tax key number T6-068000B and T6-049100D. Said land contains 758,825 square feet, or 17.4202 acres. Rezoning the petitioned area to MXD, Mixed Use Zoning District, will be heard, as well as an amendment to the official map. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear those persons who wish to express their opinions for or against the requested annexation, rezoning, and official map revision. A map and legal description of the parcel can be viewed at the Department of Planning and Zoning by appointment, 109 North Main Street, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 7:30 AM and 4:30 PM. This was published in the Daily News, March 8th, 2024, and March 15th, 2024, and 38 notices were sent.
Thank you. I just want to make sure you, when you read the number added another zero, I just wanted to make sure for the recording here or the playing here, the first one you read was T6-068. I have 00B. You said 000B, which is correct, if somebody's looking it up.
I, I don't know. The notice of public hearing had three zeros, and the other one had two. So which?
It's three Bs.
I'm sorry?
It is three Bs.
Three zeros or three Bs?
Three zeros. I'm sorry. Three zeros, one B.
Okay, so that number would be T6-068000B, unlike the one published on our website. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Thank you very much. Okay, explanation of hearing by staff. That would be our city planner.
Open the hearing first.
Oh, I did open the hearing. Then we had a reading of the notice. I even hit the gavel.
Oh, yeah.
Come on, I miss things, but not that.
Pay attention.
Oh, yeah, come on. Explanation of hearing by staff, and I'm guessing that that would be Jacob.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. So here's the map of Harvest Creek Annexation Area. If you look here, this little blue area north of Autumn Ridge, this is the Autumn Ridge subdivision north of there. In the description, in the write-up, it's 18.08 acres, and then in the actual public hearing notice, it's 17, I can't remember exact, but 17 acres. That's because of right-of-way dedication, so that's why the numbers are a little off and a little different. But these are the parcels here, these two parcels right here, that will be annexed into the city. Again, kind of an aerial photograph of where we're at on these two parcels. This is the annexation map, kind of giving the legal description of the property and the size. Here is the proposed development. The reason why it's getting zoned to MXD is because of these parcels right here. They are townhomes. They're fee simple, so instead of like a condo where they have a shared common area, these are people own title to the property as well as their structures. MXD is the, or MX, yeah, MXD is the only zoning district that allows townhomes and then single-family units together, so that is why we're moving forward. We did receive contact from several citizens in the area about concerns about, is this letting commercial in here? We don't want commercial on K. This will not allow commercial for this development. This is solely for residential purposes. It's a unique property. You have in the northwest and northeast corners, very steep topography on that property, which makes it a little more difficult to develop, which is why the layout is the way it is currently. When it first came to the Plan Commission September 11th, they were proposing 30 single-family townhouse lots and 25 single-family detached lots. That has since changed because of the need for fill. I think it added over an additional $10,000 per development, just to bring in 60,000 yards of fill. So it is now 50 single-family, or 50 units, of which 32 single-family townhouse lots, and then 18 single-family detached lots, which are your regular traditional single-family lots. There are a small portion of wetlands on the property, nothing major here. It is already in the, in the, kind of the preliminary plat that they're starting to develop, so they're aware of that, and that can easily be mitigated. There is no floodplain on this property again, so even with the steep topography and the real kind of valley there, there's no floodplain or any kind of fluvial feature, river feature, creek. And that's about it. From a valuation impact, the single-family townhouse lots, on average, will give approximately $45,475.35 a year, which it comes out to about $1,421.10 per dwelling unit. And then the single-family ones will be around $33,868.10 at $1,888, or $1,881.56 per dwelling unit. So these will add value to our community. We're not foreseeing any issues with utilities, fees, or services for that development, and we're not seeing any impact on the school district as well.
Thank you very much. At this time, we would ask appearances for. Anybody looking in support of the petition of this direct annexation by unanimous consent? Any persons for, just come up to the microphone, and you get three glorious minutes. Anybody for? Third call, anybody for? Hearing none, we go to appearances against. I believe there was a woman, anybody wishing to speak against the direct annexation by unanimous consent by Home Path Financial? Anybody, please, just come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and you get three glorious minutes. Pull it up, please. Thank you very much. You're a tall guy.
That good?
Yeah, it's good.
All right. My name's Mark Berg. Address is 1472 Walnut Court. Abut the property in proposal. Just some comments on it. You referenced that there's a wetland as part of that. Where that road is planned to come across from Patton Drive there is exactly where the wetland comes through. If you drive out that way, in the past week, it's been flooded. It floods every spring. It's wet all the way through summer. They typically don't plant that part of the field, or whatever they do plant doesn't grow. So the concern is those of us that abut that property in question, they're going to have to do considerable filling. I know you said they changed their plan around so it wouldn't be as drastic, but to fill that road in so it comes on plain, what's the projected impact to those of us that already have existing properties? Once you fill that wetland in, where's that water going to go? And then, as well as, has there been an environmental impact study done? I know you said that it wouldn't be difficult to mitigate the wetlands, but what's the process of, process of that? And then, long-term, as a city taxpayer, we're now putting a road directly over wetlands, or a peat bog, or whatever it is there. It continues back behind the daycare center on the other, on the west side of K there. What's the sustainability of a road long-term that we're now investing in as, as will, once it's no longer development, it'll be part of the city road system? So on top of that, the wildlife and everything that's back there, and is there commitment that they'll for sure be condos or owned units and not rentals, that we don't have subsidized properties abutting our neighborhood? That's all I've got for questions on that.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Appearances against. Thank you for your patience, ma'am. Just state your name and your address, and you get three glorious minutes.
Okay. My name is Betsy Miller, 33, 36 County Road K, Hartford, Wisconsin. What?
You pulled the microphone.
Oh, you can't hear me?
No, up a little. You got to point it at your mouth. There you go. Perfect. Thank you very much.
There you go. I guess I don't sing enough. Betsy Miller, 33, 36 County Road K, Hartford, Wisconsin. So I'm directly north of this parcel you're talking about, and of course, I am against it because I like my land out there, but I do have some concerns, and I had not seen that map before. I was trying to figure out, are those single homes? Well, anyway, that's a question. I'm just stating my stuff. So I have some concerns because I think it's important that, I'm not as well-together as Mr. Klink. There's, it's a vet clinic. We have a dog kennels there. We have a farming community. I want to be sure that there's some sort of protection for the people that are surrounding this in the way, berms, trees, that sort of thing. I also have a concern over the waterways. I know they said there aren't any, but there are quite a few, if you live there, that you see. So I worry about how close they're going to be to my property. We do have a lot of drugs in our clinic. I don't know what I'm going to have to do in exchange for that. Also, I agree with the man. Are they going to be owned or rented? Are there going to be a lot of high-traffic areas in there? I'm trying to go really fast.
You have plenty of time.
Where's the clinic? Traffic. How, where's the road come in? Is it going to be coming in off of K? That's not a question, a statement. I guess I was concerned about how much that might interfere with the traffic or problems with our entry off of K, and I'm thinking that's mainly what I had. I was trying to say it really fast. Yeah, that's about it.
As I say, you have two minutes left.
I do?
You are going quite quickly, so.
I know, because I get nervous, and I'm not prepared, because I had to rush, because I work all the time. So I realize that the town of Hartford is going to extend. I would just like some way to make sure. I think it's only fair that we have some protection from people that would be moving into that area, and they need to know that there will be noise coming from our clinic. There will be dog barking. We have people coming in 24 hours a day. We have horses. I want to make sure there's a way that if they're offering to put up trees or fences or whatever, to make sure that people don't come onto our property. There's also the schoolhouse that we've redone, and I'm going to have to find a way to protect that from people that are going to be coming into that area. I guess that's primarily what I was concerned about. I guess I'd like to see what they have. I know that I have to work with them. I just would like it to be a pleasant thing, and if they can come up with something that would work for me, it would make me really happy. That's it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your time.
I can't ask one question. What was the name of the company that's developing it? This guy right here?
Home Path Financial is the, and it's going to be called the Autumn Ridge Estates Edition. If you're looking for specifics, you'd be able to take any questions offline. Jacob?
Yep. All right. I'm not the developer. I'm the city planner.
I understand.
No, no, she asked me if I was, oh, yeah. So, again, I'll go out to the first couple. So why this makes sense to us is, first of all, you have Hartford Square here, which is high-density residential, and the property in this northwest corner of the development-
He's showing it up on the screen, ma'am.
Up on the screen here. So this is high-density development right here, to create a buffer between the single-family to the south here and this property. These duplex, not duplex, these are single-family attached dwelling units, so townhomes, will be in this northwest corner here, which create-
Single-family homes?
They are single-family, owner occupied.
You mean you're talking about these right here?
Correct. Those are owner occupied.
Okay.
And then these here are your traditional detached, single-family units.
I don't know what that means, detached, single-family units.
A house on its own lot.
What are these up here?
Townhomes.
Those are townhomes. Oh, I thought you just said they were single homes.
But they are single-family, yeah. The property, each individual owns the property and the house.
Okay, but how many families go in each one of those homes?
One.
One, single.
So they're all just one family per square?
Yep.
And they seem really close to that. How far away are they going to be from the boundary line here?
They have to meet the setbacks of the MXD zoning district, plus there's this extra buffer yard here, which isn't required by code, that the developer is putting in there on their own.
And any other questions? You can just ask Jacob. No, no, you don't have to be sorry. You know.
I'm not supposed to ask questions.
No worries, no worries. Thank you very much.
That's my issue.
Okay, next discussion by council.
We might have one more.
Oh, we have, I'm sorry, we do have another one. Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, just please come up, state your name and address, and you get three glorious minutes.
Ellen Leland, 1464 Walnut Court.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Ellen Leland, 1464 Walnut Court.
Thank you.
So I'm right next to Mark. I'm actually-
Oh, okay.
So my concern, this is our property right here, and these three houses. My property has about 15, almost 20-foot hill into the properties that are planning to be built. So my concern is, I guess, how high up this is all going to be built, and if it's just going to be a big creek behind us, and basement issues, things like that. I guess just where the fill's going to end up for that. And I'm also a little concerned about, just wondering, who is going to be building? I know in our subdivision, we have multiple different builders. I guess is that going to be, assuming to happen in this one as well, or is it one builder that's going to be building all the homes? And then I do have pictures of what it looks like right now. It is completely flooded into like the second layer of townhomes right now. I don't know if you guys want to see it or not, but I do have that, if I can email someone or-
Yeah, if you have any, if you have any pictures, you can give them to Jacob, the city planner, and he can incorporate that into when he's, you know, speaking with the developer. Is it going to be one builder? Do you know?
Yes, Home Path Financial does their own developments, yes.
Oh, there you go.
Perfect. I didn't know if they were selling it to anybody. Okay, perfect. That's all I needed.
Great, thank you very much. And now I will look up and see before anyone else. Seeing none, we go to discussion by council. Yes, President Rosniak.
Jacob, big concern about water out there. Is a retention pond mandated in that subdivision?
This development would have to, would meet, would have to meet NR 151, which is the DNR stormwater standards. They would have to model their, their stormwater runoff from this to be contained in a one-year, a 100-year, or 1% chance flood event, storm event. So they would have to, to develop that, as well as part of the plan is to create a grading plan that is reviewed by the city engineer staff, and they would review that and make sure that there are no issues with flooding in the, in the future. Again, this is just the annexation portion. We still have to go through the preliminary plating process, as well as the final plat process.
Okay, but obviously, that'll all be taken into consideration.
Yes, yes.
Second question. Second question. Patent Drive comes up the Highway K, across the road from this. Do we have plans to extend Patent Drive into there? Or is there a different entrance or signage? What's planned out there?
So, if you look up here, this is Patent Drive right here. It goes straight across into the subdivision. So Patent Drive will be extended into the subdivision.
And we'll call it East Patent Drive?
Well, at, when we, when we develop, when we get to the preliminary plating, we'll give it a name. But at that point, up until that point, it, well, we'll just consider Patent Drive East for right now, but yes. And again, County Trunk Highway K is in the jurisdiction of the county right now. Uh, we don't have jurisdiction over that portion, so speed limit, if people are concerned about speed limits and stuff like that, that's more of a county issue than a city issue at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Super, thank you. Any other discussion by council? Any questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Please, go ahead. Elder person, Philip.
Just clarity on the speed there. So the speed there is 40 miles an hour, and now we're gonna have a crossroad going across those subdivision areas. Who controls that speed?
I believe that is the county at this point in time. Um, if we really wanna do anything, I think we'd have to do a, there'd have to be a traffic study to figure out what is all would be required there. Generally speaking, uh, turns or stop-and-go lights require a certain interval or a number of, certain number of traffic, average daily traffic load for, for that to, to, uh, to put that into, into, uh, practice by the city or by the county. So it would probably have to be a, a study done. Uh, again, it's the county's road and they're the ones who would have to mandate that.
And just would like some clarity on this conversation with the water concerns. I think we had a meeting, um, a couple of times several weeks back on developments that were done way, way in the past where consideration for water impacted neighbors and, and so on. So the guidelines that are given by the DNR with respect to water retention, they also take into consideration the effect of the change in the topology and what's gonna happen with the neighboring properties as well? Or is that guidance provided by the city?
There, there's a technical, the DNR has a technical standard on stormwater and how to, how to treat it and/or how to direct it. Uh, so whoever develops it will have to, they're engineers. They will hire an engineering firm and they will work with the city engineer to make sure that all stormwater runoff meets NR 151 guidelines. Uh, there's also, we also are in the Rock River, uh, TMDL basin, so there's gonna have to be phosphorus and sus, total suspended solid traptment in that, which often takes it the requirements above the 100-year flood plane, uh, catch, or catching a 100-year flood. So, uh, I'm not concerned about, about, uh, stormwater so much because of these regulations that we have in place now. Uh, again, with the older subdivisions, we probably did not have NR 151 or NR 151 in the technical standards. We're in their infancy. And also, we have newer, it's model, it's based off of their, of, uh, of, of a stormwater model that uses 40 years of data. The last 20 years have been pretty wet. This data is now in there, so they're calculating based off this wetter data than when 80s, 70s, and early 90s type of data. So they have better data sets now for forecasting stormwater.
And your, your confidence is high based on the comments that were made to address the standing water issues as well as those marsh areas?
The wetlands will have to, again, if they, if it, wetland law was kind of, it was not, it was, it was kind of relaxed a bit for development in, in urban areas, uh, so long as you don't disturb a certain amount of area of wetlands, uh, you can, you can, you can go in there. But if you start going over a certain acreage, then you have to start mitigating, and the mitigation process is, is expensive. And the developer would, already knows that type of stuff. So they, they've already researched this stuff, so they know what it's gonna take to put this road in and what kind of fill, what kind of grading that, that they have to do to, to create this intersection in this, this road.
Thank you. Nothing else, mayor?
Thank you. Any other discussion by council? Hearing none, I'll close the hearing and ask for possible action on ordinance number 1482. This is an ordinance annexing territory to the city of Hartford, Wisconsin, east of County Trunk Highway K and north of Autumn Ridge subdivision. Uh, look for, uh, motion for possible action on this.
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve, uh, Elder Person Kohler, seconded by Elder Person Turchi.
Is this to suspend the rules?
To suspend the rules.
Okay.
Of course, it's an ordinance.
Motion by Elder Person Kohler, seconded by Elder Person Turchi, to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of proposed ordinance number 1482.
For suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no. Motion carried, thank you. And for passage, Elder Person Kohler, Elder Person Turchi.
Motion by Elder Person Kohler, seconded by Elder Person Turchi, for the adoption of proposed ordinance number 1482.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no. Motion carried, thank you. We don't have anything for finance or personnel, public works or utilities, so we go to resolutions. Item number 11, uh, resolution number 3671, resolution approving the city of Hartford adjusted urban area boundary. We have an executive summary attached, and I'm gonna hand this over, uh, with an explanation to, uh, Jacob and to Steve. I know, Steve, you were going to be commenting as well.
Yeah, so, again, just to give the, the board, again, you've gotten a chance to review the packet, the information which has been handed to you also tonight. Um, so, again, the Wisconsin DOT came out with a change in which we were no longer a part of the West Bend urban, uh, boundary areas. Uh, and what that does is basically says that from now on, um, when you petition to get DOT funding, you're gonna have to do so on an individual basis. It's no longer petitioned by the county and then us obtaining it from the county. It's gonna be, basically, we're competing with everybody in the state for these funds. Uh, that's for both, uh, state and federal funding for, for highways. Um, anyways, so they came back with a recommendation, and I'll have, uh, Jacob talk more about why the reasoning was behind, um, where the, that map was, was drawn. But basically, it just, it's, it's all about the fact of, um, where you can request to get funding for, for highway money. Um, it does not annex any property in, it doesn't prepare it for annexation. It, just the fact of you no longer would go through Washington County, ask Washington County to get the funding. It's now, we're on our own. We are our own team and we have to hope to compete against everybody in the state to get this funding. Now, in the situation where we, uh, the, the urban boundary area has been expanded, and again, I, I'll let Jacob explain the whys, but what happens is the, the, the state highway obviously would stay in the town of Rubicon in those areas where it's currently in the town of Rubicon. But what we, we would do is we would actually be teaming up with them to petition to get money for those, um, those, that, that funding for those roads when they fall within the, the town of Rubicon. So it's not like as though we're taking over those roads. It's not about, we're getting something, you know, money. Obviously, we're gonna petition to get money for our state highway, uh, that, that fall within the city limits, but because of this, how this DOT has petitioned this whole thing, again, if it's, if it's an expanded area, we would then also help those other areas to, to petition to get the funding. So I'll let Jacob talk more about the why.
All right. So again, here is the, the map that was included in your packets. Uh, you can see, the mouse is working, but, yep, there it goes. So this is the area mostly in discussion, right, tonight, from the, from the town of Rubicon. Uh, zoomed in here, uh, we've looked, the reason where, I'll give you the reason, we're looking at anything south of N, east of P, and then north of Pond Road. Uh, the reason for that is, one of the issues is, or the city of Hartford 20-year urban sanitary sewer service area. Uh, this is kind of sewer packs map of all the sanitary service areas in their region. So you have cities like Whitewa, or Whitewater and, and Hartford, uh, they all expend, extend into adjacent townships and counties, uh, around them that are not part of sewer packs. Uh, here is the zoomed-in Hartford sanitary boundary. Uh, you can see, here is about Goodland Road, and then you can see Rubicon Sanitary District Number One. That is directly connected to our, our, our wastewater treatment facility. So we're treating Rubicon's sanitary water from, from their subdivision development out in the town of Rubicon. Uh, so that is why anything north of 60 and east of P is considered urban area for our, or why we requested the urban area for the highway. And at the end of the day, this funding is not for local roads, like your smaller roads like Pond Road or Goodland Road. This is for State Highway 60 or your county roads. So this has nothing to do with the smaller roads. That's a totally different funding mechanism. Uh, it's, it's the recognition that these roads are the conduit by which these utilities run. I mean, when we do road reconstruction, what's the one thing we always do? We run our utilities with them. Uh, when we are looking for funding from the state, it would not be, you know, why, it would, it would not be wise to blindly not think about driving utilities with these developments of state and county roads. The next one is Y south of 60 but north of Pond Road. Uh, as part of the 2007 intergovernmental agreement, it does allow for annexations outside of the city growth area for utilities. Uh, in 2009, well 16, which is right here, went online. So we have this, and this is our highest-capacity well. If you look at our wellhead protection area for this, this, uh, piece of road or for this, for this well, it is, it's very large when you compare it to the other wells that the city uses for its water source. So knowing that this is south of 60 and extends to, to P, and then goes down, because we have been requested by individuals and we've always told them no about running utilities out to P, uh, some of them are, are municipal-minded, uh, entities out that way. Uh, but for the most part, we've been requested to have these utilities served out there. And, again, this, this agreement only runs till 2032. This is 2024, 10 years from now is 2034. We don't know what the next intergovernmental agreement is, and I don't wanna handicap the city of Hartford in this agreement. Uh, it's, that's my job, is to make sure that we move forward in the best interest of the city. Uh, that is why, again, because of well 16, uh, a super-high-capacity well that has ability to deliver services along the 60 corridor and up-down P, uh, it, it makes sense from a planning perspective, not just in the next 10 years, but 20, 25, 30, 40 years down the road. So that is why we're asking for south of 60 and north of Pond Road for the extension of the urban area boundary.
So again, that's the why to this whole situation, and, and you understand, you know, why we're even involved in this whole situation under my explanation earlier on. Um, the, the, again, this is a, a mandate, uh, brought down by the DOT, uh, and we're just simply trying to get this, uh, you know, figured out and straightened out. This does nothing as far as impacting, um, the township as far as what they can do in the future. This all has to do with what the DOT is allowing and, and having us do as far as partnering with them to help them get funding for DOT-funded roads. Any questions?
Go ahead, Elder Person Reagan.
Um, so, it, it sounded like you addressed it, but I would assume the only state road is State Highway 60, correct?
Correct. And then it also cover, will cover funding for county roads, so P and N would also be covered under this, this funding, uh, but the local municipal roads would not be.
Which would be Pond Road.
Pond Road or, uh...
Or any of the other suburbs.
Goodland, yep, yep.
President Rosniak.
So this was mandated by the state, by the DOT?
They reached out to us, yes.
Okay. And what, five or six of you guys formed this committee and came up with this plan, right?
Myself, city engineer, as well as utility departments, sat down with the DOT. We did a teleconference with them. We went over the boundaries. They had a bunch of questions. Uh, they're doing it with Slinger as well, and then West Bend and Jackson. So, uh, but they were the ones who sent out the invitations, uh, not, not the city of Hartford. So we didn't have any determination on who got invited to, to, to the conversation.
And keep in mind, again, it was there, when they sat down with us, they recommended the idea of looking at those utilities that are out there as, helping to guide as to where your boundaries are.
Sure. I think the good news too for you Town of Rubicon guys, and thank you guys for coming. I think the good news is somewhere along the line, you might wanna build, rebuild Rome Road. We, you need our help, we need your help in, in getting that state funding, those grants and the whole bit. So I think what we have to do is work together on this. This isn't our idea of expanding into Rubicon. We're not gonna do that. Absolutely not. This is a DOT mandate and it's, looks like a pretty good plan. It's unfortunate you weren't involved in it or informed of it, but neither was the Town of Aaron, neither was the Town of Hartford. Townships were not involved in this, right, Jacob?
Correct, from my understanding.
So, so you weren't the only ones left out.
So that was a state decision as to who was at the meeting? It was their meeting?
Yes, yes. They sent out an invitation to, uh, city clerk Shannon Crylecamp, and she forwarded it on to us.
Okay.
And don't blame the nine of us that are sitting here, because we just found out about this a few weeks ago. So it's new to us also.
Elder Person Philip.
Yeah.
So, so just clarity, 'cause, uh, President Rosniak made a comment, Rome Road's not included in anything like this, right? This is county, county?
County roads and then, uh, State Highway 60 are the ones that we'd be using funding mechanisms.
I said if Rubicon wanted to fix up Rome Road, we could assist them or endorse it.
We would, we'd be co-petitioning for their funding.
Sure, that's right.
I mean, it's sort of like having your father show up with you when you buy your first car to help you with, you know...
He did, yeah.
So...
Please, gentlemen.
So let, let me, let me get clarity on, on this. So our motivation on 60 is the fact that we've got a well there and we wanna protect the road that brings the water to our space. Is that, is that the idea? Or why are we so interested in the association with the infrastructure for the water?
Roads are the basis for extending infrastr, or your utility infrastructure. Uh, again, you don't have to, you don't have to run the water there, but you can, when you redo the roads, you can put that infrastructure to make it ready for that. You don't have to necessarily run the water down that road, but you can put the infrastructure in to facilitate that in the future.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
I, I want clarity on that. So then, why didn't we extend farther north? Why did we just limit it to where we have it there? I mean, I, I understand the fact that you guys wanna capture this area for the well for, for your future expansion reasons, but why did we limit our, our growth then? Why didn't we make it bigger than it is? With that logic?
Well, we, so we have, on this map here, we have County Trunk Highway N, and that's the northern expansion of where we're asking. And this is currently where the, uh, Rubicon Sanitary District Number One is located. So this would allow us, if the Town of Rubicon wants to expand or the sanitary district wants to expand along P or N, this would allow us to petition for funding along with the renovations of P or N to get, to get the federal funding to allow for those expansion of, of sanitary sewer service to those, to those subdivisions in the Town of Rubicon.
And that, and that they would remain in the Town of Rubicon?
It would remain in the Town of Rubicon.
It would not be annexed?
Nope.
It would not be annexed. It would just make it much more convenient, and of course, less expensive down the road, if you'll pardon the pot.
Correct, because otherwise, they have, they either would have to change something up for, for their septic systems.
Right.
And, or they'd have to develop their own pond system for wastewater treatment.
Jeff, go ahead.
So, I mean, it, based on the drawing, it looks logical. You did get guidance during your meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I do not see much into this. I think we're over-analyzing this as a council here. Okay? I think the staff did a pretty good job.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I would look for a motion for the resolution of possible action on resolution number 3671. Elder Person Turchi, seconded by Elder Person Savage.
Motion by Elder Person Turchi, seconded by Elder Person Savage, approving the adoption of proposed resolution number 3671.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you. Item number 13, city administrators' report, discussion and consideration of authorizing appropriate city officials to enter into a contract with Wander Construction West 2874 Graylog Road, Iron Ridge, for the 2024 West Wisconsin Street Storm Sewer Modification Bid at a Cost Not to Exceed $32,840. And with that, we turn to our city administrators, Steve Volker.
So, part of the approved 2024 CIP budget, you approved the, again, sewer, storm sewer extension out by Wisconsin and Whacker. The bids went out, and we received, and I apologize, I'm trying to pull that one up. We received several bids, and the lowest bid came in from Wander Construction. Just so you understand, again, the location of this, this is located on the corner of Wisconsin and Whacker, Whacker Logistics. And again, they will be actually doing the work to put in the, thank you, to put in the storm water retention pond. And we're just putting in the, the piping, basically, to get to the water to that, which was a part of our plan. So, you already approved this on the CIP budget. Again, the total budget for this was 50,000, $67,500. But again, it came in quite a bit less, $32,840 was the low bid from Wander Construction. And in front of you, you see the four different quotes that we got. Any questions? Yes, Elder Person Rosniak.
Does this run from Whacker all the way to Grant Street, that entire stretch? Whacker to Grant, behind Time Trucking?
It goes to the, to behind the trucking firm, yes.
Behind, but not all the way out to Grant Street? Or not?
I apologize. I don't have a map of it in front of me.
I would assume they'd go all the way to Grant Street.
I can't tell you. You answered that question.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Again, I'd advise you to look at the CIP budget for 2024. That would explain exactly where it was going. Any other questions? If not, mayor?
Thank you. Would look for a motion to approve. Elder Person Savage, seconded by Elder Person Reagan.
Motion by Elder Person Savage, seconded by Elder Person Reagan, authorizing appropriate city officials to enter into a contract with Wander Construction, Inc., for the 2024 West Wisconsin Street Storm Sewer Modification Bid at a Cost Not to Exceed $32,840.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. And I do have one question for our city administrator, only because my phone has been ringing, and I just wanted a clarification, which I should have asked during the mayor's report, and that is, all that man-made thunder that's been going on the last couple of days off of Whacker with those explosions, could you tell us again what that is?
Yeah, there's a company out by Wisconsin Whacker area that basically uses the explosions, but it's, it's the, how they make their product is basically by using that to, again, drilled into, I guess, the best way to do is to, for their product. They have to let us know in advance, at least two weeks.
Right.
In which they did. And as you all read in your weekly memo, that was, let us know that they were going to be doing so late last week into this week, so. Yep.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And last night, it was thunder.
I know they put up signs and all that, but I, I'm just going through Walmart while they were going off, and people were just thinking that they were being shelled, and I tried to explain to them that, no, this was, we notified, and there's signs up on Whacker and...
So, it's a manufacturing process, not construction? Somebody...
Correct, yes. It's a manufacturing process. They probably do it about a dozen times a year.
Okay.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you very much. And with that, motion to adjourn. Elder Person Savage, seconded by Elder Person Carroll.
Motion by Elder Person Savage, seconded by Elder Person Carroll, to adjourn at 7:53 p.m.
For adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We stand adjourned.